Hello, today is February 26, 2024. And this is our newest edition of Council Countdown. Thank you for joining us here on BCTV prior to our County Council meeting. We've had a full docket of committee meetings today, starting with the Finance Administration and Economic Development Meeting. And then after that, at 3:00 PM was the Public Facilities and Safety Committee Meeting. But like I said, thank you for tuning in here before our County Council meeting. I'll be hosting, and I'm Chloe G., here with our PIO Hannah Nichols. So Hannah, can you tell us a little bit about what's on the agenda today?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Chloe. Like you mentioned, it's been a very full day in council chambers today. We started at 1:00. At today's Finance Administration and Economic Development Committee Meeting, one of the most discussed topics was a measure to possibly provide additional supplemental pay for Beaufort County poll workers this coming election season. Now, as far as I know, no action was taken on it. It was just for discussion, but it seemed to be a really positive conversation in the room. And then at the Public Facilities and Safety Committee Meeting, we had a discussion on the 2018 One-Cent Transportation Sales Tax. Now, that period of collection has ended, and we're in the process of now seeing all of these projects come to completion. As you may know, we had a groundbreaking ceremony last week. That was for the Laurel Bay Pathway Project. That is a 2018 One-Cent Sales Tax project. And you're going to see more and more of that come up as these projects are approved and they start getting implemented. So we're really excited about that. As a reminder, anyone watching at home can find out more information on that 2018 One-Cent Sales Tax by visiting beaufortcountypenny.com. That's got all of the project notes, the meetings, the original objectives of that, and it's just a really good resource. So tonight, this is going to be the Beaufort County Council Meeting. We start at 5:00 PM. And I think personally, the most interesting item is actually on the consent agenda. The consent agenda has a measure for the appropriation of 15% of this year's state accommodations tax to go towards the development of workforce housing. As we all know, affordable housing in this area is much, much needed, so I'm really excited to see if that measure passes. And we'll also see the possible approval of a resolution regarding the Low Country Area Transportation Study, and that's being done in partnership with the Low Country Council of Governments.
Yes, affordable housing, 100%. It's an absolutely beautiful area, and I know so many people want to move here, but they just, you know, struggle sometimes. So I think it's great that County Council is taking notions to try to better that for people and make it a little bit easier for everybody to enjoy the Low Country.
It's a great initiative, and I really am excited to see Beaufort County Council utilize these, like, more creative sources of funding for these projects, because I don't think normally people would think of ATACS.
Yeah. We do have a couple of announcements, some things coming up. The Beaufort County Veterans Affairs, in partnership with the Technical College of the Low Country Students Veterans of America, will be hosting a Black History Month program this Wednesday, February 28th, from 11:00 AM until 1:00 PM. The event will be held at the TCL Auditorium, and this program is free and open to the public, no reservations required. The program's theme is "Preserving the Legacy and Keeping the Plenest." And as most people know, it is tax time here, and so the Beaufort County Library is continuing their free tax preparation assistance to Beaufort County citizens who qualify. This program is available to help persons who are earning $63,398 annually or less, differently-abled persons, and those that are 60 years and older. The Low Country Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program is offered in collaboration with the Beaufort County Human Services Alliance. I got the May site in my head after we did a report with them last week. The Beaufort County Human Services Alliance and United Way of the Low Country. For more details or to schedule your appointment, visit aarp.org/money, or you can call the Hilton Head and Lufthansa.
And no worries about mixing up those departments. The only thing that means is that there's so many amazing things happening in Beaufort County that we can't keep them straight sometimes.
Yes. And speaking of amazing things, we have an amazing event tomorrow. You can tell us a little bit more about that.
Yes, so the Beaufort County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Department is hosting a free five-minute melaxone training tomorrow, February 27th, between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM at the Town of Port Royal Government Center. Now, this is a free, just drop-in training that will help you understand how to identify the signs of opioid poisoning and how to help someone who may be exposed to opioid toxification or illicit contamination. Like we said, no appointment required, it's free. Everyone who comes and receives the training will get a free supply of melaxone, and we'll also have free Detera bags to assist you with disposing your expired or no longer needed medication safely and appropriately.
It is amazing that we are able to do this, not only help out by, you know, giving out free supplies and educating, but it'll make sure anybody's prepared for any situation that they come up with. So it is, it's very awesome. I'm going to be heading out there to do a further interview and coverage of it tomorrow, so be on the lookout for that across our social media platforms. And I think now would be a great moment to thank you, everyone, for joining us here on BCTV. Our broadcast team is constantly developing new and engaging content that matters to the area. New this year is an exciting schedule of shows and programming, available on Cablecast, Channels Comcast, Channel 2, Harkory Channel 9, and 113, and Spectrum Channel 11304. For our cord cutters out there, you can also stream live on beaufortcounty.tv or on YouTube. BCTV also streams live on Roku App, Apple TV, Android TV, and Amazon Fire. So whatever platform you're watching this on right now, we thank you and keep it up, because we are doing this to have engaging content for all.
It sounds like there's a ton of different ways to watch us, and we hope you'll take advantage of that. And also, just a reminder for our viewers that may just now be tuning in, you are tuning in before the 5:00 PM County Council Meeting. All agendas and agenda packets are available at least 24 hours before meetings at beaufortcountysc.gov. So make sure you check that out if you'd like to follow along at home. We would like to issue a small warning for bikers. The Spanish Moss Trail Extension in Port Royal is currently under construction, so if you come through there, you're going to see some barriers, you're going to see some fresh cement. We'd like to remind everyone to please be aware of the signage down there and any possible trail closures. The project will extend the trail from where it currently ends across Reba Road into Port Royal. So the length of construction will depend on a couple of different factors, including any possible concrete airworks. Please watch your bike tires, watch your sneakers, and just be safe out there.
Yes. That is a great order, and they're going to be extending the Spanish Moss Trail, correct, in partnership with NCAS?
Yes, that is the groundbreaking ceremony we just had last Friday. That is the Laurel Bay Pathway Project that's going to run the entire length of Laurel Bay Road, so we're super excited to see that project beginning construction, and hopefully it will be open within the next eight or nine months.
Yes, it's going to be awesome. And moving on with some other events we have going on, on February 29th, Leap Day, there's going to be a chat with council right here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM. It's a wonderful opportunity for citizens to come, address, and interact directly with their Beaufort County council members. It is open to the public, and registration is not required. So yes, if you have any interest in County Council, you have something you want to say, show up right here in the council chambers on Reba Road, and you have your opportunity to talk with no restrictions.
That is such a unique opportunity, because even as we're going to sit here in a couple of minutes, citizens are afforded the possibility of commenting, but these chat with council events await for that two-way dialogue. So if you have a question or a concern that you want addressed right then and there, you have that ability. So we really hope a lot of people come out. That's going to be this Thursday, starting at 6:00, and it'll end at 7:30.
Yes, and we are getting closer here to the County Council Meeting, and we apologize for, you know, distractions. We are in a room full of people, so it is tough sometimes to make sure that, you know, our camera stays still, but it is great.
I think it's ideal that we have people in the room, honestly. Nobody wants to have a government meeting and no one show up.
That's what I was going to say. I think it's great that we are able to have people come out. Certainly is what we want to see, because we want to make sure our community is as invested and...
For those of us who might just be joining, we've had a full docket of meetings today. We started earlier at 1:00 PM with our Finance Administration and Economic Development Committee Meeting, and we had a number of topics in that day. So many, actually, that we had to reschedule. The South Carolina A-Tax Funds Appropriation Discussion. I believe that council's going to be considering scheduling a special call meeting on March 11th for that, just for that agenda item, because there's a lot of information to go through, and we have a lot of really good efforts and pauses behind it. So I'm excited to see that.
I was going to say, yes, I know that the Finance Committee did run a little bit long. What else was discussed?
It's all good stuff, though. We discussed our fiscal year update. We got an update on upcoming fiscal year '25. We got to hear from our new Chief Financial Officer Denise Christmas as she went through all of that information. And we also received a very in-depth presentation on poll worker pay. So I believe coming soon is going to be a measure to allow supplemental poll worker pay for the upcoming election season. So that'll be really nice to see as well.
That's awesome. But that is all the time we have here today. Thank you for tuning in. And momentarily, we will begin our County Council Meeting.
Thank you, guys. I'm Hannah Nichols. Thanks for joining us. You can check out all of our agendas on beaufortcountysc.gov.
Everyone, I would like to call the County Council Meeting of Monday, February 26th, to order. Would you please stand for the pledge, and please remain standing, as Councilwoman Taverneck will do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was going to play a song tonight instead of doing an invocation, but I thought it would set everybody on edge, so I'll save that for the next time. But these are words from a contemporary Christian song. It says, "Lord, we pray for strength and guidance for each day, as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to always give our best, and may we be assured of your presence within us." I added this part. "We ask that you watch over us in this chamber tonight, and with your hand on our shoulders, guide us in our decision-making. We seek your enlightenment, wisdom, and support as we represent the citizens of Beaufort County. As long as we're breathing, we've got reason to praise you. Amen."
Amen.
Play the song next time. Live and...
As you can see, we do have a full council this evening. We are missing one member, Mr. McKellen, who is trying to get in as we speak. He will be joining us online, so we do have a quorum to conduct business of council. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Would a council member offer the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Dawson makes the motion.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Next is the approval of minutes for January 22nd, February 5th, and February 12th. A motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. A second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Lawson makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Next is our administrators' report.
Good evening, Chairman and Council. First, I'd like to start with a couple of current events. Last week, council members, staff, and myself attended SEAC classes, South Carolina Association of Counselate and Delegation. Just past Friday, I attended the Laurel Bay Pathway Project. Councilman Dawson spoke at the groundbreaking for the Laurel Bay Pathway Project. It was a really, I think, a well-attended event. You learned about that a little bit earlier in the committee meeting. That project has gone on since the 1980s. It took a long time, and there's a little kind of asphalt sidewalk along there now that was built many years ago. So it was really nice to see the groups work together between the Department of Veteran Affairs, the Air Station, US Marine Corps, and Beaufort County involved in that project. So it's a really nice project that'll connect the Air Station to Laurel Bay, and it will bisect the Spanish Moss Trail, which is another good advantage. This morning, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony in the city of Beaufort for Southside Park. It's a beautiful park, kind of in the middle of one of the city of Beaufort's large bedroom neighborhoods. Mrs. Alice Howard was there this morning, and I got to listen to her speak as well. Congratulations to our municipal partners, the city of Beaufort, and all of those who spent so much time working on that project. It is right in my neighborhood, and to see it finally be a reality after so many years will be exciting. Next, I want to recognize a few employees. This evening, we have Trevor Hayward from Animal Services. Come on up, Trevor. He's going to hide back there. Tallulah did not tell him why he was here. So Trevor has worked for Animal Services... Oh, you got him right here. See? That's you. See you on the camera. There you go. So Trevor's worked for Animal Services for four years. He's drastically reduced the feral cat population by implementing trap and neuter return programs, which are pretty tough, really herding cats, right? He works hard on a variety of tasks, to include animal cruelty cases, pet retention programs, capturing strays or dangerous animals. He works with residents to educate first prior to taking their animals. This practice helps keep animals in their home, provides them with resources to ensure that their animals are being cared for properly. Tallulah Trice, our Beaufort County Animal Services Director, says that Trevor is one of the department's most adaptable members. His positive work ethic, ability to adjust quickly, and desire to work hard make him an exceptional team member. Trevor, you want to say hi?
Hello.
How about...
That's it?
I'm starting to say he's a one. One word. So he'll have to be mad at Tallulah for sneaking up on him. All right. Also, this evening, I'd like to introduce you to an 11-year veteran of Beaufort County, Ann McGowan.
I think she left.
She's still on her way? It's okay. So Ann, Ann has served Beaufort County for more than 11 years, first with the Assessor's Office, and for the last about three years with the Veterans Affairs Office. Her duties include responding to inquiries from veterans... Does she make it in? No, not yet. Responding to inquiries from veterans, county employees, many of which are veterans, as well as the public. In order to... Veterans assistance programs are very complex. It takes a wealth of knowledge to be able to field many of those calls on a routine So she provides answers and information for departments, local, state, and federal policies and procedures. A lot of things to study. She prepares and provides statistical information for the Veteran Affairs Department, maintains logs and reports, and takes care of all of the interdepartmental documentation. So Ann, in July of 2021, Ann was promoted to the position of a Veterans Service Officer. So this is direct support of veterans and their families from Beaufort, Jasper, and Hampton Counties. In this role, she would provide free professional assistance to veterans and their families in obtaining benefits through service connected, through service-connected military service. She represents the interests of disabled veterans and their family by assisting those veterans and submitting claims for benefits, making referrals to local, state, and federal She collaborates with different teams and agencies to ensure the quality of life for veterans and provides support in areas such as vocational rehabilitation, home loans, education, insurance, burial benefits, and much more. Although she's not here, Ann McGowan, thank you for your service to Beaufort County. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We're at our first citizens' comment. Is there any member of the audience who has signed up or wishes to speak before council? Okay, then we'll move on to our committee reports. Any member of council need to report?
Just a couple of things. Mr. Chairman, I attended, and so did Ms. Brown, the Stormwater Board meeting on February 14th, and I also attended the Town of Port Royal's retreat, which was Friday, February 23rd. They were setting their goals for the next year. It was a good meeting.
Excellent. Anybody else?
I want to pass on that Craig Gordon, who is the Chair of our CTC, that's the Transportation Committee, he's been invited to speak on March 20th at the State Transportation Meeting, where all CTCs will be there, and the Secretary of Transportation, all 46 counties. And according to Craig, he's been selected to speak because they believe Beaufort County CTC is a model committee.
What day is that again, Mr. Chairman?
March 20th.
And where is that going to be?
I presume it's in Columbia.
Oh, more likely.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, as the liaison representative to the Public Defender's Office, I just want to put an issue that's on the floor for the Finance Committee. Several years ago, and I must apologize for not memorializing it, but several years ago, there was a meeting with the Public Defender's Office, and under the direction of Hayes at the time, he recommended an increase in their positions, because they were losing public defenders and other support staff. And we were asked not to bring it forward to the, in the middle of the year, but that it would be placed in the budget for the next year, and that was never done. And so there's a delta that's in the Public Defender's Office budget at this time. They made the request after we made, we supported Solicitor's Office a year before then, and they lost a lot of their attorneys to the solicitor. And basically, they wanted to upgrade their solicitor's, I mean, their attorney's salary. And when that request was done, but because we never fully funded appropriately, they having a delta in their fund balance at this time. So I want to bring that on the table for us to at least address. Hopefully, we can correct that and move forward. The other thing that they are requesting is that when the state and the county employees receive their $3,000, because they had signed up to be a part of the county, their staff never received those $3,000. By law, they were not supposed to, but that's something that, as a county, we could do if we so desired. So I want that to be also in the consideration stuff. So just want to bring that on the table, Mr. Chairman.
That's all part of the budget process.
Yes, sir. And I missed the early part of the meeting earlier, so I didn't say there, so I say now. Thank you.
Okay. Any other reports?
I have one. Mr. Reed? Mr. Chairman, thank you. Jarrett, in our last meeting, talked about the airport, Hilton Head Terminal Expansion's going very well. That's underway. I want to talk about the Palmetto Breeze very briefly here. I went to one of their board meetings, and they are in need of funding this year, as we all know. And I heard from Hank and Denise that that's well in hand to take care of. I know they have a study, a Northern Beaufort Transit Study, that's underway right now, and I believe they're asking us for some money, and I want to make sure we get that on the, whatever proper committee it is to get there. Hank, any on that, or Jarrett?
For Lance.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But good, very good meeting, and we had that retreat here a couple of weeks ago, and one of the key things that we're going to focus on is transportation. I think the Palmetto Breeze can help us, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay, two things from me. Number one, those of you who heard our administrators' report, heard that we, as a council, went to take classes in the South Carolina Association of Counties, what they call Government Connects Day. It was a two-day event. I would like to acknowledge that Mr. Reed, Ms. Howard, Ms. Brown, Mr. Bartholmew, Ms. Taverneck, and myself were the council members there, along with Mr. Robinson, Mr. Fralix, and Mr. Edmondson. and Mr. Edmondson. Of the 34 counties there, we had the largest number of participants. So a job well done by the council members here. Second, those of you who are watching us on TV, those of you who are here, you missed a very good meeting just before this. It was our Public Facilities and Safety Committee meeting. At that meeting, we presented information about the 2018 referendum. And you see that we're talking about the 2024 referendum. It's not on tonight's agenda. We haven't had the third reading yet, and that's by design. There are several people out there that we need to get consensus from as to what they want. This is a collaboration between our municipalities and the county. Yes, it is a county referendum, but it affects the municipalities and the county at large. It also affects our neighboring counties. We intend to have what we will call information sessions, four of them specifically. One that will be held on Hilton Head Island, one that will be held north of the Broad to cover St. Helena's Port Royal, city of Beaufort, one that will be held in Bluffton, and one that will be held for the unincorporated section of Beaufort County. We understand how important this is to the quality of life that we have here. It is a lot of money. There's a bunch of misstatements out there because people don't really understand the process and procedure. We intend to fill in the blanks before we have the third reading. So I hope all of you will pay attention to what is coming forward over the next month or two before we have that final reading. Okay, so we move on. Oh, yes. Our young lady, who we honored, is now here.
Oh, my God.
Yes, we've already honored you. So we get to have you come up, take a picture, and say something, if you wish.
I got to talk about you.
I'm a miss. Thank you so much. And I understand the Assessor's Office is being recognized also, so I would like to recognize the Assessor's Office. In recognition of the Assessor's Office, I would like to thank the individuals who are responsible for hiring me into Beaufort County. September of 2013, I thoroughly enjoyed my duties as administrative technician of the Tax Equalization Board and archiving official assessor records. I enjoyed the people I worked with also. I would probably still be there, but fate took me to Veteran Affairs. I have found my passion in helping veterans and their families in being the best I can be in doing so. This evening, I am filled with gratitude for this recognition. It is a reflection of not just my work, but the belief, effort, and aspiration of everyone who has been part of this journey. I am deeply thankful for the opportunities I've had, the challenges that have made me stronger, and the successes that have been all the sweeter for their, for their difficulty. My aspiration is that this recognition not only serves as an acknowledgement of the past achievements, but also as an inspiration for future endeavors. May we all aspire to create, contribute, and make a difference in whatever field we choose. Thank you for this great honor, and may we all look forward to a future filled with achievement and purpose. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we move on to the action items. Item number nine is approval of our consent agenda. May I have such a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard made the motion. Ms. Taborneck made the second duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Saying none, the consent agenda is approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 10 is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute the necessary documents to convey a portion of property owned by Beaufort County with a TMS, also known as Beach City Road Hilton Head Island. May I have such a motion, please? So move. Mr. Reed's made the motion. Ms. Howard made the second duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Saying none, this will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Number 11 is approval of a resolution authorizing the provision of funds to the Low Country-Area Transportation Study, known as LATS, for Beaufort County's portion of the local match for the Northern Transit Study, the South Carolina 315/46 and Bluffton Parkway Extension Study, and the Bluffton Parkway from South Carolina 170 to US 278 at the Bluffton Parkway Flyovers Study, and further to authorize the interim county administrator to execute memorandums of understanding with the Low Country Council of Governments for the management of the regional studies. May I have such a motion, please? So move, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bartholmew made the motion, and Mr. Reed's made the second duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I will be voting against this. It was motion at LATS by one of the representatives on Hilton Head to remove the portion of the Bluffton Parkway, which they're referring to as 5B. That is a connector that they want to do between Buck Island to Buck Walter. The person from Hilton Head is the one that recommended removing it, and that was shot down, even though over 100 people showed up to voice their opposition of 5B in a room that only held about 25 to 30. I was there. I spoke, along with other council members and people from the community. So I will not support this as long as 5B is a part of it, which that is part of the study. I've had people tell me on LATS that they say they want a study to say that it's needed or not needed. I can tell you, they also came out, including the chairman of LATS, stood up and said and told everyone that the road can no longer go all the way to 95 because Hardyville has sold that property to Margaritaville for homes where that road is supposed to go. So I will not support this funding. Seems like a waste of tax dollars, especially for a road that's going to cost us $50 to $60 million to build right there in Bluffton for an area that I already have to, have access to, other than to get access to landlocked property that is not needed currently right now in Beaufort County. So I will definitely object to this unless somebody is willing outside of myself, because I made that clear, to remove the portion from the Bluffton Parkway from there. But the issue, let's see at the bottom there, it sounds like the Town of Bluffton's willing to fund that portion because they know that the county doesn't support it.
Okay. So this is, is my understanding, and I'm probably wrong. I didn't think this 5B was included in this paragraph.
The Bluffton Parkway Extension Study, that is specifically referring to 5B, and it even says in our fiscal impact at the bottom that the match for the Bluffton Parkway Study will come from Bluffton Transportation Impact Fees.
Okay, so I'm with you, Mr. Cunningham.
It's not necessarily 5B. It is the entire Bluffton Parkway, of which 5B is a component part, but the original idea was that the Bluffton Parkway was not going to end at 170, that it was in fact going to go to 95. Obviously, that's not going to be the case now, so the study may well say, as an alternative, why would we do anything?
I believe if that is the same paper, if it wasn't updated, that's the paper used in the meeting, it's number 14, has 5B specifically listed out. If that's the document that came from LATS on the computer screen.
It was 5B.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If this is going to be an issue for the South of the Broad, is there any way to separate this? Because I know that the Northern Transit Study is needed. We have a lot of folks that, that need access to mass transit up this way, and that's why I'm, that's why I motioned to it, because this needs to be done.
Well, yeah. And so is South Carolina 315 and 46 definitely needed as well. Mr. Fralix.
Can I give some clarification?
Yeah, please, yeah, please do.
So you are right, these are three independent studies. They are not connected, so if you want to separate them, so you may choose. There's two studies that are, are in relation to Bluffton Parkway. So one of them is focused on the extension all the way to the interstate. So you're right, at one point it said connect to Exit 3, and so that would be from where it ends at 170 westward. And that section, as, as referenced in the last meeting, may not necessarily be through Jasper County, through a direct stretch there, extending where it is today, Bluffton Parkway. So it's really looking at traffic in the lower part of Beaufort County and Jasper County is what that study is focused on. Whether it's in that existing alignment to get to the interstate or not, that will be determined as part of the study. The 5B portion will be evaluated in the Bluffton Access Study separate. So what that is going to look at is basically over the last 20 years, we have constructed the entirety of Bluffton Parkway as it stands from 278 to 170. In some form or fashion, it doesn't include the 5B. It will evaluate what needs are needed to update access, to get parcels to a signal, any modifications to the existing Bluffton Parkway as we know it. It will also, in that specific study, evaluate the 5B portion, whether that is, is value-add or not from a technical standpoint. So that's the difference in the two studies there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. I think, appreciate that, Mr. Jarrett. I, when I got on council, I was sort of monitored, warned that as we move forward with Beaufort County, to make sure that infrastructure is appropriate. And the person who said that came from Charleston, where they did not plan for infrastructure in that county, and it's becoming chaos, very chaotic at this time. I don't know whether 5B is the right thing to do, but I can tell you that when I look at, or when I travel that road, it's not getting any easier. And when I make doctor's appointment, and they have an office in Savannah and they have one on Hilton Head, I basically tell them I prefer coming to Savannah because it's easier for me to get there. I did travel this morning, a little earlier than normal, to Savannah, and I got stuck on 170 for some time.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I don't travel that, you know, I, when I, I select my time when I go south of the Broad, but today I had to go a little earlier, and I made the appointment, but I was kind of nervous. I don't know what is needed, but I prefer to have a study and make that decision. And infrastructure, whether you're talking about traveling now or even in evacuation, that's important for this county. So I'm going to support the motion that's on the floor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So I'm with Mr. Cunningham. If these are three different memos, the one about that Bluffton Parkway, it's a no-go. Mr. Williams told me it's stopped by Minto. So why would we kick in 30,000, I think is our share, for a study we already know isn't going to go somewhere? Unless you could tell me it's going to go somewhere else.
Yeah, so, so in that session, a large part of that is in Jasper County, whether it's the Bluffton Parkway extension where it was designed to, or whether it's 46 widening from the traffic circle back towards the Jasper County. Those would be the components in, in basically Beaufort County, why we would fund a portion of the local match.
And I've made the argument for, it's not even necessarily me being against that road. It's me being against Beaufort, once again, having to do everything first and take the burden with nobody else saying they're going to come and do their portion. And that's where I have the biggest thing. If you want to tell me that this will go from Hilton Head all the way to 95 without touching 278, I will be here to work and advocate with everybody else to get that done. But we literally have the chairman of LATS saying that's not going to happen right now, who is, isn't it the mayor of Hardyville?
Yeah.
Who is saying that's not going to happen. So why am I even stirring up all this for the people that I represent, for a road that they're so against, when I can't even tell them that, yeah, it's, it's going to get there? Now, Mr. Glover, I don't know the roads as well as you do here, but I know them pretty well in Bluffton. I can tell you that, that doesn't change any evacuation, still puts them right back on 170. All it does is give you access from one portion of Bluffton Parkway that leads to a portion on Buck Walter, to a mile and a half down the road on Buck Walter. That's all it does, it changes the alignment from one point on Buck Walter to another. Still goes to the exact same road, and still pushes them right to 170 and right to 278. So I'm all for, like I said, I'm not going to waste my time trying to pull it out if nobody else is going to support it. I made that very clear at the public meeting. I've made it clear for three years, but I will 100% support anybody else that wants, willing to pull that out today.
Mr. Williams. Yeah, I, I will vote for it, because again, we're not voting on actually funding the road, we're actually doing the study. And that's what's important for us, to figure out for long term what's going on, what's needed, what's not needed, what's going to happen. And it'd have to come back to us. We have to vote on it, we'd have to go through all that, for there to be anything else that comes out of, out of, out of that ever being built. So again, what we're looking at is to do a study, which I think is very, very important for us and for the future, for, for people who are sitting in our chairs in the future of what they decide to do. But again, I, I can't see that happening while we're here, you know, on, on council, but again, it is needed for information.
Right. And LATS will do the study with Low COG. They have to do a prioritization of the, the roads that are being recommended. So this is just one component part of this. It's not committing to doing anything other than studying the roads for the future. Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Call the rule, please. Has everybody who wanted to speak, they've spoken? All right, would you call the rule?
Councilmember Bartholmew.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Lawson.
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Brown.
No.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Taborneck. Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Glover. Councilmember Dawson.
Yes.
Chairman Passamit.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, we are now at our second citizen comments, and one person has signed up, and that is Mr. Cade Yarborough. Cade, please come forward.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Cade Yarborough, and I'm with the Defuski Island Council. As a reminder, our council is made by Beaufort County, so that the Defuski Island would have a voice, and we could tell you how the community feels about things impacting our island. We are elected resident, we are elected by residents and property owners, and we try to operate in a way that looks like your council. A council election was held two weeks ago. We've got new people to the council that are Mike Hubbard, Sally Ann Robinson, Anthony Capuccio, and Kim Church. Kim Parker was reelected, and John Shartner and myself are continuing as members. I am the new chair. Mike Hubbard is our vice chair. John Shartner is our treasurer, and Kim Church is our secretary. Among other changes, we now have an infrastructure committee, which is chaired by Sally Ann Robinson, which will focus on projects, especially the development of the multipurpose building promised by the previous administrator. And looking at the goals for this year, nothing is more important to our constituents than having a regular, reliable ferry service. Everyone knows that the last few months have been very difficult for Defuski residents who depend on the ferry, especially our small businesses, who depend on the tourism to survive. Kim Parkner and Anthony Capuccio are our new co-chairs of the Ferry Committee, and they hope to work with you closely, with you and your staff, addressing these ferry-related issues. Our council is also expanding its volunteer support for efforts. Vicky Wassier is holding a survey with priority issues on the ferry. She's conducting a, a survey that will be released in the next couple of weeks, and we plan on sharing those results with you. In the meantime, I can tell you that the concerns of the Manatee Two continue to rise. We've had some safety issues. We've also had an incident in the past week. One of our locals ended up tripping and falling on one of the doorways, and she hit her head and had to go to the hospital and get stitches. We've told you guys that before that this is not designed to be a ferry, it's an excursion vessel, and it's not what the RFP called for, nor is it what the- It's an excursion vessel, and it's not what the RFP called for, nor is it what the current operator promised. I hope that we can agree that strong action can be taken before there's another tragic incident. We have asked Deborah Smith to be our legislative volunteer liaison, because Deborah has a house here in Beaufort and Defuski. She's a great person to come back and forth and kind of keep in touch with what issues that may affect our community. Another of the council's top goals is to improve our communications. We ask it to be a two-way street. Let's work together to make sure that nothing ever again, like the situation where decisions are affecting Defuski are made, and our constituents feel like they've been shut out of the process. Thank you for your interest in projects and policy issues that impact the Defuski community. Please feel free to contact me at any time about any matter. The entire Defuski Island Council looks forward to working with you guys in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just say one thing to Cade? Is that appropriate or not? I just want to say, you look good in that suit.
Thank you, thank you.
Excellent. And Doug, congrats on the elections and all that stuff.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, the next item is an executive session. I would ask for a member to make a motion, and second, pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2. First, to receive legal advice, where the advice relates to pending litigation, which is scratched both LLC versus Beaufort County and the Beaufort County Council, for a discussion of proposed contractual arrangements and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. And finally, a discussion of matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, which is inquiries and investigations pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 4-9660. And there will be matters arising out of executive session, more than likely. A motion, please.
A motion, yes.
Ms. Brown made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Dawson made the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Any questions? Saying none, we are now in executive session. We will return as soon as we can, but it may be a little while.